Okay. Hello, everyone. I will call this meeting to order. Could we have first have a motion for adoption of remote participation?
So moved is written in the agenda.
Second.
Okay, let's do our roll call. Hamner Sackton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Erica L Z Bolton, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
And Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulian Needham, yes.
Oh, still a question, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. Uh, Dr. Dawson, have you, did you receive any public comment for this meeting? I know I have not.
I do not believe so, but let me double check from the last time I checked, just to make sure. And. I don't see any.
Dr. Dawson?
Now I'm checking. Um.
We do have, um. We have a note in the, um. Chat from a couple of people saying that they had.
I see, I see one here. Yeah.
Okay, normally what are? Okay, so, so we do have a number of comments from people in the chat that they did send in. Um, public comment.
Yep, I see one. I have, I have questions for tonight's school meetings and then I have one. That is a specific public comment.
Okay, normally the procedure is for the, um, chair. To read the public comments, but it does seem a number of them were sent and, um, I am wondering whether it would be okay with the committee for, um. Our superintendent to read the comments that she has received.
Yeah. So just to clarify, I have received one that is specific for a public comment. And then I, the others were just inquiries. Um. For asking me to talk about it tonight, but not requesting that it be a public comment.
Okay, so.
So if it's okay, I can read the one that's public comment specific.
Well, yes, so if you could do that, um. Um, I would appreciate that.
Yes. Dr. Dawson and the members of the Minuteman School Committee. My name is Jenny Edgerton from Stowe, Massachusetts. And, um, just for, um, something that I'm not going to say like the student's name, if that's okay. But, um, our student in the animal science, uh, they have a student in the animal science program. We have just been informed that the school committee is voting to possibly terminate the MOU with Boston Vet. The student is a member of the inaugural animal science class and they have been eagerly awaiting the opening of an onsite clinic in the fall of 2023. It's critical that those students have access to a clinic next year in order to continue learning and applying the necessary skills for their program. Shuttling all the rising juniors to offsite programs is logistically too difficult, especially as the teacher needs to be here onsite to work with the incoming freshmen. In addition, the program needs more space as they are all using the same makeshift classroom. The number of students only continues to grow with each new class. Next year, there will be two classes in the same weekly rotation and there's not enough space in the current configuration. The parents and students would appreciate an update on what the issues are and what the contingency plan is. We are concerned about the implications of canceling the MOU at such a late date. Can another organization step in? Would Minuteman go it alone? Is there anything we can do to help ensure that our students are provided the opportunities that they need? Thanks so much, Jenny Edgerton.
Okay, and yes, and that is all that you received for our public, um, comment?
As an official public comment, there, I did receive other emails asking me to speak about it, which it is an agenda item, um, this evening. So there will be, I will be able to respond, um, to some of these concerns.
Okay, and as is our policy, we don't discuss public comment during the public comment. But as Dr. Dawson indicated, there is a related agenda item, so that, um, later on on the agenda. Okay, so with that, could we move to superintendent's report? And the first thing is the, um, FY24 budget update.
Uh, and could I, could I maybe do a little intro to that?
Yes, I was gonna ask you to do that, yes.
Okay, so, um, the finance subcommittee met last night. Um. You may remember that at the, uh, at the school committee meeting of last week, I had outlined that we had looked at the superintendent's, uh, first version. Of the budget and it included a, a, a 5.9% increase and about, uh, I think a 15.3% increase in assessments. So, uh, before the finance committee meeting, uh, of, of yesterday, I had, uh. Sent an email to Dr. Dawson and the finance staff to, to see if they could, uh, we could look at, uh, several budget scenarios. And I had, um, specifically asked about, uh, a 5% budget increase, a four and a half percent and a four. And then to kind of describe what would have to give or what would have to be cut, uh, if we went to any of those scenarios. So, uh, last night when we met, um, I guess the 5% wasn't even off the table because Dr. Do- doctor, uh, uh, is, is off the table. Because Dr. Dawson presented a 4.5% uh, and with a couple of different scenarios at 4%. So I thought it was important for the school committee, uh, to understand what kind of trade offs might have to be considered if, if, uh, you know, if we want to see budget reductions here and there on, on the recommended budget. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Dawson to kind of walk through all of that.
Thank you, Mr. Ladue, and. Um. Before we kind of go over what it is that we are requesting at, um, at the 4.5 as Mr. Ladue indicated. Um. Just to kind of go over the ramifications, so. When we are requesting the 4.5% increase, what we are asking to do. Because as we looked at, again, I just want to reiterate, you know, our budget reflects our priorities and our values and we value teaching and learning. And, um, what is it that our teachers need? Um, in order to meet the needs of our students, like that's, that's the lens we were looking at as we were, um, developing this proposal. To minimize the negative impact on the support that's needed to strengthen the teaching and learning at Minuteman. We, um, ha- have made every effort to make sure that we have the staff that's needed. We are continuing to, um, roll out the animal science program. And so therefore, you know, this 4.5% increase over the FY23 budget adds three additional new staff. We do need a second teacher for animal science as we continue to, um, roll out that program. Based on our, um, student data, we do need another math teacher. So that's our second position that we are requesting to add. Our, um, third instructor that we're looking to add is it to support the growing enrollment in the engineering pathways. So our 4.5% increase is requesting three additional teaching staff to support the needs of our growing programs and, um, the needs of our students. To fund these three new teaching positions, we had to make cuts across all areas that included the department requests. And in this situation, we had a number of, um, vacant coaching positions that we, uh, that historically have not been posted, but we have been budgeted for. So at this time, we are looking to cut those coaching positions and not budget for them. This, um, 4.5% increase also left us, um, not meeting all of the additional requests from the staff. We needed seven additional staff members, three of them whom would be for direct classroom support. We are not able to hire all of the seven additional, um, staff members. We did prioritize for the three teaching positions. This proposal also does keep our cooperative education and workforce development position reliant on grant funding. So eventually we will have to move that over to our regular operating budget because that is a position that we will need each year. So that's, um, what went into developing this 4.5% increase over the FY23 budget. And that is what is going to be proposed to you tonight, um, shared with you in further detail by our business manager, Ms. Andrade. But if the district was to require, um, if the school committee was to require us to make further cuts to propose only a 4% increase. This would mean that the district would have to not, we would not be able to, um, bring on the three new positions. We would only have, um. To only be bringing on two new versus three, or we would also have to eliminate the two long-term substitute teaching positions that we currently have recommended. Because there, these, um, positions are vital to help cover the needs that, um, we have on every day. Um. For a number of reasons, to cover classes, but to also to support additional needs of classes. So if a 4% increase would only allow us to either. Um, bring on two new positions or eliminate the two long-term positions if we were to bring the three. Um, neither of these cuts, um. I mean, all, any of these cuts, they have a dramatic impact on teaching and learning, and so we do not recommend this at all. On the other hand, if the district could increase the budgetary request to 5%, this would allow us to bring the three new teacher positions. Keep the two long-term substitute teacher positions, move our cooperative education workforce development coordinator position to the operating budget. And this would also allow us to keep the vacant key, um, coaching positions. So as you can see, there were, um. You know. Consentia, consentia, concessions made to try to, um, be where we are at 4%. 4.5% really prioritizing the three teacher positions. And then of course, just to remind us that we have not, um, you know, completed our collective bargaining, um, negotiations. And so that will also impact where we land. So just wanted to kind of share that overview and then, um. Ms. Andrade, do you want me to share my screen?
Um, it's totally up to you. I can share my screen if Julia has enabled. If not, you can share your screen. So, um, we can walk through the information that was sent.
I'll, I'll send.
Yep, why don't you, why don't you share, Ms. Andrade? And then Ms. Andrade will go over our 4.5% um. Proposal.
Good evening, school committee. I, uh, am presenting you with the superintendent's second version, which we presented to the finance committee last night. Um, our first line here is our operating budget. Um, you'll see that comes in around 6%. And, um, with the reduction in our capital debt service line, that ends up, um, putting our total operating and capital budget at a 4.5%. Increase as Dr. Dawson described to you. Um, the big story that we've continued to tell towns and remind the school committee is, um. What really is happening with the assessments. So while we have a four and a half percent increase in our budget, um, what's really a driving factor. Um, and is our non-assessment revenue, um, and the change between years. So. As everyone knows, the more in-district students we have, um, the less out-of-district students we're able to take. Um, and that also has an effect on our revenue. So our tuition that we receive from our out-of-district students as well as our capital fee revenue, um, has continued to decrease. As we're seeing the increase in, in district students. Um, so that's a primary driver and, uh, in the change between years. Our chapter 78 is our state aid that we receive. Our chapter 71 aid is our regional transportation reimbursement. But where you'll see what I'm talking about is our prior year and current year tuitions. Um, unfortunately, um, from, from the revenue perspective, as we only continue to accept, uh, the in-district students. We have, um, a corresponding decrease in the out-of-district tuition that offsets our member assessments. Um, so you'll see, uh, a significant drop here in the revenue that we're able to offset the member assessments by. Correspondingly, the, um, out-of-district students also pay a capital fee. So you again will see a decrease in these two lines as the out-of-district students, um, continue to decrease, the revenue will also decrease. We'll, in the FY25 budget, see, um, a, a similar amount of offset. But projecting further into that, if we continue to accept, um, only member students, um, based on enrollment, the, that revenue will essentially. No longer be available to offset the member assessments. So that's our, our big story, um, and a big reason why the, the total operating budget at 4.5%. Um, is not totally in line with what the average required member town assessment would be. Um. This information is broken out by town on the very bottom page of the packet, um, our last page. So we'll go specifically more into detail on each specific town and what that would mean for each town. Because this is the average for the full district. Sorry, let me zoom out. This page, um, describes which towns we have and the total budget assessments from FY24 and FY23. What the proposed change would be at a four and a half percent increase in our operating budget. And again, on our last page, we'll go more into detail on what the percent change per town is looking like and why that's so different compared to the operating budget. This is a capital allocation, um, plan. This really hasn't changed. Um, but describes the debt we have and specifically for each town, which debt is, um, excluded from, um, the prop two and a half. This page has a lot of information, but, um, again, summarized in our last page, it will show the four-year rolling averages for each town. And, um, how that breaks out the capital assessment. These are the changes and I won't go into detail because we've gone over them with the finance committee. But each version of the budget, we have made cuts from our department request to our superintendent version one request to our superintendent version two request. So you'll see in here notes on the side for each line, um, and each version, what exactly we've cut and prioritized. Um, for each of the function codes, which is how we present information to the school committee as required by the state indeasy guidelines. Our second version, um, of the proposed budget is, um, for a 4% increase, but option one. So if we were to decrease from four and a half percent to a 4%, this one in particular, 4.01%. It would be a reduction of one of the three additional teachers that we've proposed. Um, that Dr. Dawson described, the animal science teacher, the engineering robotics teacher, or the math teacher. Again, we're not recommending this, but as it was an option, um, that was requested, we wanted to show, uh, what it would look like. As far as our operating and capital budget, as well as how it affects the member assessments.
And if I may just clarify, of those three teaching positions, the animal science, um, teacher must be added. That is not, that's, that's one that has to be because we're continuing to grow out that program. And it's that time now, you know, we've had one teacher with two grades as we add the third grade. That's when we bring on the second teacher because each of our programs has two teachers. So if we could not do the 4.5 and we were not bringing on all of, you know, the three, it would be either the math or the engineering position. That would not be fulfilled, not the animal science, that has to come in.
Thank you for clarifying. Our second 4% option comes in at 4.07%. That would be, as Dr. Dawson discussed, uh, eliminating the two long-term substitute positions that help, um, fulfill the needs of the building. Um, again, this would cause, um, you know, oh. This would cause some detriment to the, the teaching and learning of the building as it fulfills, you know, any of the, the duties that, of the teachers that aren't there. And we're really focusing on keeping our kids and our staff in the front and forefront of our budget. Um, what I think, um, is, is probably the most telling and most important, um, to the school committee would be this last page. Uh. We do talk about the budget as a whole in, in 4% or, or four and a half percent and, and how we're going to move forward. Um. While that's our, on our total budget, our budget is based on, um. The enrollment of the students and enrollment in the towns. So you will see all of your different towns here highlighted. And what the enrollment count has been for the past five years. Uh, the assessment increase is strongly correlated to the increase in enrollment. In particular, the four-year rolling average, which we calculate and base the budget on. So this column here is our FY24 four-year rolling average. And this column here is our FY23 four-year rolling average. As you can see, as we are shifting away and taking more in-district students, that has increased our four-year rolling average for our member towns. Um, and some. In particular, have increased much more than others. Um. Here is our town assessment increases. So we had an average of 13%, however, because our budget is based on enrollment and so strongly correlated to each of the towns. You will see a very strong correlation between the increase in their four-year rolling average and their increase in their assessment. So this, um, I wanted to point out because this is something that we talked to the towns about. Um, and maybe some questions that, you know, will come up. But we wanted to show this slide in particular and show how the difference in a four and a half percent budget versus a, a 4%. Um, option one or 4% option two would look like for your towns. Um. There will still be a significant correlation between the increase in enrollment and the increase in the town member assessments. Um, because of the way our budget is calculated. Um, we've also put together a PowerPoint graph to help show the correlation too. So this in particular shows, um, the increase percentage wise for each of the towns, including the district. In the four-year rolling average and the increase in the assessment. So you can see that there are some very strong correlations and that may be why, even though we have presented a four or four and a half percent budget. For your approval, some towns may be seeing a larger increase than others. And that's very strongly correlated to the increase in the enrollment for those towns. I. Hope that summarizes things. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that have come up while I've, um, gone through these slides with you.
Okay, thank you very much. And, um, I see some hands and I will get to, um, them and in the order that I see them. Um, before I open it to the rest of the school committee, I have just, uh, I have a couple of questions and a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank you for making this presentation to us today. I think it's very important for us to, um, you know, have a sense of where the district is going to be with its budget. Before we get into the actual budget, um, cycle and needing to approve a budget in, um, in January. So I really appreciate the work that went into this presentation. And I also want to just appreciate, um, the difficult decisions that go in. Um, into doing this as well as the focus on teaching and learning. You know, that's, that's absolutely where the focus, um, needs to be. Um, I have, um, I have a couple of specific questions. Um, and at the same time, while I, I do appreciate where we are right now. I do feel compelled just to, um, share where I know at least one town is in terms of budgeting. And, um, you know, requests that they have made for, for us. And I, you know, recently received a communication from the Acton Bucksboro School District. Um, where they talked about that the AB School Committee has, is keeping the district to a two and a half percent increase this year. Um, and, you know, conversations in general that all town committees are looking at us, trying to keep it to no more than a 3%. I think that we do have some towns that have, are very, so like Acton, who are very supportive of Minuteman. Uh, but also feel like, you know, it's the, the financial burden is getting high and are asking us to really take a look at our budget. And I appreciate the work that's gone into this so far, but I do want to just be clear that, um, you know, we have other pressures in our member towns. Who are the ones who have to approve, um, the budget as well. Um, I do have one question on the last slide. You're talking about which showed the different percentages increase, um, for each town. And you said it was largely driven by, um. Uh, you know, by the number of students coming by enrollment. Are there other factors that aren't equally divided among towns that might result in one town having a larger increase than another?
Yeah, so based on how the budget is calculated, there is a portion that's, um, the wealth of the town. And then there's a portion that, um, as it's kind of been alluded to in the, um, adding of new towns. It's kind of a, a even 1% for each town. So, um, there are some other small factors, but, um, this is the easiest and I think most understandable and relatable way to show people. Um, in how strongly correlated it is to the enrollment.
Um, one other comment I have as we're talking to our towns and, uh, talking about. The large impact that, um, not having out-of-district, uh, students is making on the budget. I think we also have to keep in mind that for years, we talked about having all in-district students was a, a plus. So I think we need to be. Just cognizant of that as we're describing our budget and explaining why, you know, this is something that we talked about as an important direction to go. And now we're saying, but hey, it's having this other impact. And that may just be the way it is, but I just want to put it out there that that's something that we need to be cognizant of.
Absolutely, there's totally a benefit that, you know, all of these wonderful students now get access to the, the great education that Minuteman has. Um, but the flip side, you know, the pressure of the towns and the budget, unfortunately, there, there is a cost to that. Um, so definitely is a, a fine line of, um. And, and we'll craft those in our, our town meetings of, of how we explain, um, the story of Minuteman and the story of our budget.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I saw Jeff's hand first and then Steve.
So first I wanted to thank Nikki and the administration for a very short and yet very clear presentation of the fact. So first I wanted to thank Nikki and the administration for a very short and yet very clear presentation of the facts. That is very helpful and I'm glad to see it. Um, so I do want to talk a little bit about the hit on our revenue due to no longer having out of district students. So the hit this year, we knew this was coming for a number of years. Um, hit this year is enormous. It's two million, about two million bucks. With about another eight hundred million bucks, I hundred thousand dollars coming down the pike. That's going to have a very large hit on assessments. Just because we've been so successful. But let's also remember that this is partly a byproduct of a decision made a number of years ago to limit the size of the school. There's a large fear that the school would only be filled at four hundred and twenty-five students. That's what we were fighting about when we were doing the building project and we instead we made it for six twenty-eight. Uh, and uh, we got it to six twenty-eight instead of like, uh, some people wanted eight hundred, some people wanted a thousand. And the fact is, is that um, the people who were saying that the students are going to come were right. And the ones who said they weren't going to come were wrong. And part of the consequence of this decision on the side of the school is that we no longer have the revenue coming from the out of district students to the tune of two million dollars in this budget. And as far as our member towns are concerned, although they may use the size of the overall budget increase as a ruler, the thing that really impacts them is the size of the assessment increase. And the assessment increase is driven by two things. One, their students take more advantage of the school. And the two million dollar hit because of not having the out of district students, which we knew was coming. And we told them for a number of years that it, that it is coming. So I just want to, uh, again, just as kind of dovetailing over the, on the um, uh, comments that were already made. That, that, that two million dollar one-time hit is going to be very painful. We knew it was coming. And um, I'm, I'm, I know that uh, uh, some communities may say, let's keep it to two and a two and a half percent our whole budget increase this year, but I'm, I'm skeptical they're going to be able to keep that up. If they're really going to help the students who are still suffering from the end of COVID. So that's why I say in the end, it may be hard for them to keep it to that amount. Um, you know, we don't know maybe about wrong, maybe it'll play out that that's exactly what they do. But I think it's going to be hard to do that and still uh, give the assistance to the um, the students who are still suffering from the end of COVID. Any rate, what I look at more than the percentage of the budget increase is the percentage of the assessment increase. And that unfortunately is going to be amplified greatly by that two million dollar hit this year. And that is our conundrum for this year is how do we deal with all these factors? How do we keep the strong education for the kids? How do we keep the programs that are opening to can keep them opening? How to ensure that the kids who are harmed by COVID aren't further harmed by reduction in services that we can give them and yet not to be um pioneered to what's happening to our member towns. That is our, uh, our, our, our challenge and I, and this, seeing this budget options is a, is a very good way to start that discussion off. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff. Steve?
Uh, I have a comment and a question. Uh, so my comment kind of piggybacks onto Jeff, but uh, you know, if, if, if towns really wanted to see our budget only increase by three percent, you know, put this in, in kind of perspective. The original um, version one that the superintendent showed the finance committee was a five point nine percent increase and um, the assessments went up about fifteen point two. Uh, when she lowered it to four point five percent, the assessments are still going up thirteen point two. So to get to three percent, uh, and, and, and this is somewhat to what Jeff was saying, it's still going to be a double digit um, uh, increase in terms of assessment. So you know, it, it's, it's not an easy thing and a lot of it is because of the factors that Jeff just outlined. My question, and I, I, I kind of posted last night, I know, uh, Nikki was going to look into this, but uh, we do have uh, in, in, in the budget, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of excess and deficiencies of E and D that we're using to balance the budget. Uh, my question to her was how much E and D do we have? Uh, you know, is it prudent maybe to use a little more and to put some towards some of the programs that, uh, Dr. Dawson and the team had to cut? Uh, you know, I think that's just a perspective that, uh, the school committee needs to understand. Uh, you know, if we use more A and D to, to fund some positions, you know, that has some long-term implications because it really in a lot of ways is a one-time revenue, but I think there's some considerations we need to think about in regard to using more E and D and, and uh, you know, uh, and, and have that as an option to look at as well.
Yeah. So Mr. Ludu, I did um, pull up our certified uh, amounts from last year. Um, fortunately, we don't get the certified number from the state um, until January or February. So I don't have that updated number now, but our total certified number um, from last year was one million, four hundred seventy-eight thousand. So using six hundred fifty thousand um, is a little less than half of that. Um, so just to kind of give you an idea of what the balance we had um, was and, and what we're currently utilizing.
Okay. But in theory, a couple hundred thousand more could fund some of those positions.
It could certainly be um, an option that is discussed.
Okay, just, I think it's just something to put in the back of the school committee.
And what is the, what is the, the minimum that we should be keeping in our E and D?
Well, I, you know, I, I can only speak to the municipal side, but generally it, it's, it's ten percent of your operational budget should be in, uh, well, E and D for the, for the, for the schools, but uh, free cash for the towns. So you know, I don't, I've topped my head, I don't know what the math is, but um, um, you know, that's just kind of a, it, it's, it's just a recommended level.
Yeah. So the operating budget for FY twenty-four, um, you know, around twenty-three million, so that'd be two, two point three for the, the ten percent.
Which we don't have.
You know, which is fairly high, um, but as soon as I get the um, updated uh, certified number from the state for um, our last year, FY twenty-two, then I can certainly um, share that with, with the committee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Alice.
Uh, I, I share Pam's concerns and also I understand that parameters for the school district budget. Um, I'm curious about the regional transportation. Historically, that number is always under pressure and there was an effort about five years ago by the legislature to reduce the pressure on that number by by limiting how much they could reduce it. And I was wondering if they have in fact kept to their word?
Yeah, so um, unfortunately, I, I've heard similar talks. Um, last year, um, we estimated um, the number that you'll see on the screen, the one million. Um, unfortunately, how the calculation is done is it's based on the prior year schedule seven of the end of the year report, which is our actual expenditures um, of the, of transportation. Unfortunately, uh, reimbursement was based on a year when we were in COVID and did not have um to pay for transportation because students were not in school. Um, so what our estimated revenue was um, was much higher uh, than the actual reimbursement we got, which was less than eight hundred thousand. So our reimbursement this year um, is based on that schedule at a seventy percent um, reimbursement rate. There's been talks of it going higher, but um, historically we have budgeted at sixty percent or lower. So um, it's certainly um, an educated estimate. I haven't seen those higher eighty percent numbers that they've talked about. So um, while we would love to be optimistic, um, fortunately, that's the, the best estimate that we were going to use at this time.
I'm just wondering if we should not be writing to our uh, state reps to say, you know, it's ridiculous to base the regional transportation on a number that's when the kids weren't actually going anywhere.
I know, unfortunately, it's nonsense. Discussed last year, but I, I didn't see um
Well, I think I'll be contacting my state rep. That's nonsense. It is complete nonsense. And, and I mean, I'm not saying it's any nonsense of ours. It's nonsense from the state from the state and we can't, we can't just sit back and take that. I think we have to, we have to point at the state and say, you need to pay us the right number for the regional transportation and not base it on nonsense.
Thank you, Alice. And thanks for raising that issue so that we're all aware of um, of the issue and we can all take any action that we choose to take.
Yeah, eighty percent of nothing is nothing.
Right. Other school committee questions or comments? Again, I thank you for bringing this presentation for all the work that's gone into it, for all the thought, the difficult decisions. Um, I know that there's still a lot of work to do and, you know, we um, look forward to further discussions as we get to a point to approve um, our next year's budget. So thank you.
And, and Madam Chair, if I just might, the, the next finance subcommittee, it will be January fifth, uh, and we'll be looking at this further as well.
And thank you to both the administration and the finance committee, who I know are working very hard on this. And I appreciate you listening to all of us. Okay, um, Dr. Dawson, um, do you want to, the next on the agenda is the athletic complex?
Yes. Um, thank you, Ms. Andrade, and I, I um, join in in my appreciation to on the team. This started with all of our um, cabinet members really working closely with their departments to try to um, be lean about their requests. So it was extremely difficult to um, make the cuts that, that needed to um, happen. And but the, um, all of our cabinet members were really helpful in working with our, our staff to really do the best that we can. So thank you for appreciating that and acknowledging that. And, and you know, as we continue to take a look at the cost of costs, um, we are trying to find other ways to um, you know, complete projects and, you know, find additional uh, resources to do what we need to do. And so when um, this building um, was designed and when we're taking a look at the athletic complex, there were two phases to the project. And what we have currently is phase one, there is a phase two, and um, what we are looking to do is um, find another, you know, partner um, to, you know, see if there are um, opportunities for another public-private um, partnership to um, complete the build-out of phase two of the athletic complex, which would include stadium seating, uh, the concession stands, tennis courts and um, in, in, included in that would be like locker rooms and bathrooms, et cetera. So we are um, working on developing a request for proposal, thanks to Mr. Eichen, and he's been doing a lot of research and putting in a lot of um, research, making sure that we're following all the proper guidelines. He's been in constant communication with the Attorney General's Office and the Inspector General's Office to make sure uh, we're following the proper protocols. So we just wanted to provide that update and that soon in a near um, future meeting, we would like to bring forth a draft RFP for your approval so that we can seek out um, partners that may be interested in completing the athletic um, complex phase two for um, in partnership with us. Um, so if I may move, if there aren't any questions connected to that, if I may move on to the East Tremont building update? Or I can.
Before you do, um, could I just ask, um, part of our protocol is that when we are on Zoom, that people name themselves? So if I could have the person who is on and I just noticed his iPhone to please um, name yourself. Um, I would appreciate that. Okay. Was there someone who had comment about the um, athletic complex? Okay. Okay. Dr. Dawson, you want to move on?
Yes. So similarly, um, and this is kind of uh, related item C and D are related, and this is also related to the questions that came in from our families. Um, the East Tremont building initially was um, slotted to partner, you know, similar to what we're looking for with a private public partnership. And the plan um, for part of the East Tremont building was to partner with a private veterinary clinic to, for, um, they were going to be building um, their uh, um, veterinary clinic on our site located at East Tremont Building. Unfortunately, as we um, continued to work through the details of what that would entail, um, you know, we, a couple of things happened. Number one, we heard from our potent, you know, our partner on BBC that this was an undertaking that they could no longer continue with. And um, and then on the other side of that, um, what we found that there was a glitch in the process that was used to um, develop the memorandum of understanding. And so um, with the, you know, we were waiting to hear from BBC if they had any other change in, um, in, in perspective, but we did not receive that. And so the last communication we heard from them was that they would not be able to continue with our partnership. And then um, as we learned about the proper protocols that it takes to go into this type of partnership, um, a different process was followed with BBC for that MOU. And so since we're not going to be continuing that partnership, that's why tonight we're bringing to the school committee um, a request for approval to vote to terminate the MOU with BBC, since that partnership will no longer be continuing. But rest assured, our animal science program is continuing. And that's why we advocated and that we put in the budget, the second teacher that is necessary to continue our program. We are, you know, continuing to look at the space um, and different options to um, you know, add additional s- space and um, so that they can have enough space, classroom and lab space and um, kudos to Ms. Bouchard, um, Mr. DePaulo and um, Ms. Chapin. They just, I know that um, we will be bringing that to the board in the next meeting, but they also received the grant to support um, the purchase of additional equipment um, necessary to continue expanding the program. And the plan always was, right? The plan always was that um, that even if there was an onsite clinic, our students were always going to have the opportunity and will continue to have the opportunity to go to other clinics around the region um, for their co-op opportunities. Our um, onsite clinic was not going to be able to provide all of that solely. We were, was always going to be a combination of. And so um, our students will have the opportunity to still do job shadows, to still do site visits, still to be able to have those co-op opportunities. We are um, still very much committed to growing this program and ensuring that our students, just like all of our programs, have the necessary um, opportunities to fully complete and get re- um, all of the preparation they need for the, their industry credentials. So when, you know, I'm talking about um, the glitch, there are certain legal procedures that need to be followed. And when we were researching that for um, uh, our, you know, additional private-public partnerships, when we were looking at the, how we were looking to develop and complete our athletics complex, um, that procedure was not followed for our BBC partnership. So that when I'm, I'm talking about glitch, that's what I'm talking about. But prior to us, you know, finding that out in re- in our um, investigation or research to how to do move forward with a private-public partnership for our athletic fields, um, you know, our partner BBC had let us know that they were not going to be able to continue our partner BBC had let us know that they were not going to be able to continue this partnership that they had um started talking about a while back. And um they let us know that they could not continue that. So they, that's where that came. But to formally end the MOU, because we have an MOU in place, but knowing that we're not going to be able to continue the partnership because our partner has backed out, we're just saying, you know what, formally, we need to end the MOU. And that's why we're bringing um this request to the school committee to approve the official termination of that MOU because our partner has backed out. So I hope that helps to clarify. Our our students will absolutely get what they need to fully complete the animal science program and um have all of the necessary preparation for them to sit for whatever exam that they are sitting for, for their appropriate um accreditation or uh credentials. Thank you. Mr. Stuland, did you have a question?
I was just going to um um move that we terminate the memorandum of understanding with Boston Veterinary Clinic.
So is there a second?
Second.
Okay, um, uh, time for further discussion or questions? Um, Alice?
Um, I'd just like to say that, um, you know, as we've gone through this process for the last several years, this is the first regional vocational technical school, to my understanding, that has attempted a public-private partnership and there's probably some learning curve in doing that. Um, it is, it is a new, a new field um to work in. And um I I fully support the um fi- finding another way to get what we were hoping to get from the partnership with BBC. It's too bad they pulled out. You can't force people to be your partner. So um, I I support you moving forward with whatever will get the the kids what they need and and us moving forward with cleanly breaking that agreement so that it is not not an encumbrance, so we don't end up in some kind of difficulties because of the piece of paper.
Thank you, Alice. I I also want to recognize like the excitement among, you know, sort of our students or families um for starting this program. Um, we had a lot of interest in it. And um, uh, Dr. Dawson, you said that even without this particular partnership, you are committed to making sure that the students are able to get everything they need to have, you know, a, you know, a program of, you know, Minuteman quality. And um, and I think we need to make sure that our students and families are aware of what steps that you're going to be taking to do that. As Alice said, we can't force someone to be our partners. People have all sorts of reasons for deciding not to. But as long as we're committed to moving forward with the program. Other question, uh, Jeff?
So um, it's not that unusual that we have a curve ball come around when a a program is coming up or we're trying to uh do some construction or whatnot. So I think that um uh, it is very unfortunate that they decided to pull out. And I think that the administration um will be thinking inside the box, outside the box, and around the box to decide how to proceed in a manner that is satisfactory for our students. And uh, and the, I think that the um parents and students should be aware of the fact that this is a priority for the administration. It's a priority of the school committee. And we really don't want to talk a lot about ideas that are in the earlier sta- early stages. But there's a lot of conversation going on about it and a lot of energy bring being used to pursue it in an appropriate manner. It's just too early to talk about anything.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions or comments? If not, we'll go to our roll call vote. Uh, Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Judy Crock Alexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Okay, thank you. And and I do want to note that, of course, the students and the families of the students are going to be having lots of questions that I hope that, you know, would really encourage the administration to, you know, be able to reach out to um answer and address the questions and concerns of the families.
Yes, and we have a communication ready to go out tomorrow. We were just waiting for um this evening final decision.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um. I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session. I will read um what's in the agenda for the purposes of the executive session. The motion is to enter executive session and not to return to open session for the following reasons. Um, pursuant to purpose three, Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Minuteman Faculty Association as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. And two, pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to likely litigation with the Town of Lincoln regarding permit fees. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body. And so, and the chair so declares. And again, that is um not to return to open session and will include Dr. Dawson and Ms. Pink Sign.
And I'm going to ask if um Ms. Andrade could join us, please?
And Ms. Andrade.
Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you. Um, we'll move to our roll call vote. Um, Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Erica Elsie Bolton, yes.
Steve Ledoux Concord, yes.
Judy Crock Alexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice, you're on mute.
Alice DeLuca Stowe, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. We will be um leaving the Zoom, going to another Zoom. I'd like to thank everyone who took the time to join our meeting tonight.